December seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, being in Marquette's session. Turning to the question of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of America and to the republic of America.
We stand as one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for which we stand.
Madam Clerk, if you will conduct the roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Campana?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Mayor Protem Reynolds? Mayor Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Protem Reynolds is ill and unable to attend tonight. May I have a motion to excuse her? Commissioner Campana?
Like to make the motion to excuse Commissioner Reynolds as she is sick tonight.
Commissioner Smith, please.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. If I can have an affirmative vote of yes? Yes?
Yes.
Any negative? Hearing none. Motion passes six-zero. That brings us down to announcements. I only have one announcement tonight, and that is to remind... Say again?
Approval of the agenda.
I still continue to do that, don't I? I just don't like the order. I think we should change the order, so I will be correct. We have an agenda in front of us, ladies and gentlemen, if I can have a motion for your approval. Commissioner Schlegel?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Commissioner Hill?
Second the motion.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Schlegel?
None.
Commissioner Hill? Any other commissioner? Hearing none. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes six-zero. That brings me to my announcements. Only announcement, ladies and gentlemen, is to remind everybody that it is a school vacation going on now, the Christmas vacation. The kids are out and playing around, they're on the streets, and I would encourage everybody to please be cautious as you're driving, and just generally be cautious that, you know, that they are there. And we certainly don't want to ruin anybody's season by having an untimely accident. That brings us down to boards and committees. We have a new member to welcome, and that is Mr. Scott Curra. If you can meet me at the podium. Mr. Curra is being appointed to the MARQTRAN, in other words, to the Transportation, Regional Transportation Authority, as our representative to the authority. City of Marquette has several representatives on the authority, and his job is to present and to represent the citizens of the city of Marquette. I have, as a token of our appreciation, a Marquette pin that you can wear proudly and wear it at the meeting so they know where you're from.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item up is public comments. Comments are not to exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comments. If anyone has a... would like to reserve time on an agenda item, particularly on either new business or old business, please let me know, and I'll put you on a list. Public comments?
Good evening. My name is Margaret Brum, and I live at 404 East Magnetic. I'd like to reserve time to speak on New Business, item four. I'd like to use the rest of my time to address the issue of the Marquette City Police. I understand they're undergoing an audit, and I wanted to share with the room and with the auditors a positive experience I had with the police. The intersection of Pine Street and Fair Avenue, I almost had a... an accident there. And my nephew was in the car with me and agreed it wasn't my fault. You know, he would have told me if it was. So I brought it to the attention of the Parking and Traffic Control Committee, and it was less than a week later, I went to the committee meeting figuring I would bring it to their attention again, and in that week, they had pulled all of the records for that intersection. They'd interviewed all the police officers who had stopped people on that road, and they had determined that there was an absence of signage on Fair Avenue telling drivers what the speed limit was for that road. And they had, before I had come to their meeting, put up twenty-five mile-per-hour speed limit signs on Fair Avenue. And I thought that was incredibly, A, responsive, and B, proactive, and C, I was enormously impressed by the stack of paperwork they had available to them. Apparently, every time there's an incident or a stop at any intersection, it's cross-indexed so that you can say how many things bad happened at this intersection, or how many speeding tickets were given on this stretch of road. And then the police officer in charge of that committee had also interviewed the officers who had stopped the people for speeding and determined that there was no sign for them to look at. Of course, they're supposed to know it's twenty-five miles an hour. But the fact is, that was incredibly responsive, and it's a part of the police work that people don't see. And I was impressed and pleased to know that if you bring a near miss to the attention of the police department, they pay attention to it, and they look into how they can make it better. And there's all sorts of negatives about public service, and so I thought it was important to start with a positive about public service side. Much appreciated. And I can't tell you the number of times I've stopped the police chief of police after these meetings and asked him a question. And I mean, my questions are always, you know, "What about this?" And he doesn't have any time to prepare, and he's always ready. So I'm a big supporter of the Marquette City Police Department and the work that they do, and I wanted that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Kimbenzie, 306 North Sixth Street. I just thought it'd be a time at the end of the year, and we could pause to remember Tom Baldini, who a year ago, at the third Monday in December, presided over his last commission meeting as mayor prior to his untimely passing. I think we all feel that Tom was just a tireless worker for the city. He was... had volunteered for many things, and loved this place, and certainly left it a better place than when he came. So, let's remember him tonight.
Thank you.
Frank Javerto, 350 East Bridge Marquette, to speak on items four and five. These are my opinions. Here's a situation that's similar to fluoride in our water. Some feel it's safe, some feel it's not. This relates to alleged electromagnetic radiation caused by transmission to and from smart meters. Possible symptoms include fatigue, ringing of ears, problems sleeping, headaches, eye, heart, and balance problems, and leg cramps. November twenty-sixth, it was announced that we'd be installing smart water meters. Our electric meters are already auto-read. Although I've heard no concern locally, residents across the country have protested for ailments, including increased cancer rates. They protest auto-reading on account of the alleged EMF poisoning from thousands of additional signals bouncing across town. Anyone who's experienced on the potential impact of EMP radiation is urged to please come forward. Last week, the Verita Group gave us an excellent presentation detailing their conceptual plans for the current hospital campus. This group seems respectful of adjacent neighborhoods, the public sentiment, and optimal land uses, unlike a lakeshore architect who's all about profit to the demise of adjacent land uses. Unlike him, the Verita Group mentioned mixed residential as well as retail possibilities as part of their hospital repurposing. This will facilitate the connectivity of their developments with the neighborhood and the university. Our residents ought to applaud the Verita Group for seizing an opportunity that we trust will prevent the current hospital from becoming an albatross. We actually see weight right as master plan. Of concern, though, are the hazardous waste tanks, asbestos, lead paint, and God knows what kind of infectious germs that may exist and risk being transported into our new hospital on equipment or personnel. December tenth, Mr. Frazier clarified that when he said there's no development from Oradoc to Oradoc, he meant development. It took him a few minutes to mention the Coast Guard station that consumed an acre of gorgeous beach. We agree, that's the ideal spot for a station, but he neglected to mention our loss of the acre and what little we've received in return to date, until maybe sometime soon. Too many who stood to benefit are dead and gone in the time it took us to get started on our park. This board would have waited until doomsday rather than pressure the Coast Guard and DEQ to have given us use of what's ours in a timely manner. Who's working for us? Mr. Frazier also mentioned the Sailing Club. Although they've occupied this location for decades, their imposing fence is new. The public had access across the property until last summer. Now hundreds of people are forced to climb a hill and walk around for an undeterminable reason, being that little vandalism occurred at the club that I know of. These are the precise eventualities I've tried to work hard with this board to avoid for twenty-one years now.
Anyone else to address the commission? Hearing none. Public comment is closed. That brings us down to the presentation, and that is... Chief Blake will do that. If you can step up to the podium, Chief, and begin the presentation. Marquette is... the Marquette Police is in the process of going through an accreditation process, and Chief Blake will outline that for us, so we fully understand.
Thank you, Your Honor, Commissioners, staff. It's truly my honor and privilege to be here tonight to introduce a couple of special guests who are in attendance to this meeting tonight. I'd like to introduce Administrative Sergeant Heather McDonald from the University of Michigan, Flint Police Department. If you could come on up, Heather. And I'd also like to introduce Senior Deputy Chief Dan Mills from the Portage Department of Public Safety. I'd also like to introduce our staff members Lieutenant Ryan Grimm and Lieutenant Mark Wury, who are our accreditation managers. As most of you are aware, we are currently in the process of the accreditation through the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police. And the step that we are in right now is our onsite assessment. Mrs. McDonald and Mr. Mills are here to conduct that onsite assessment for the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police. So they spent the day with our staff and our personnel and in our community assessing and making sure that we're adhering to the standards set forth by the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police Accreditation Process. We're very excited. Lieutenant Ryan Grimm and Lieutenant Mark Wury have worked tirelessly to prepare for this day. And I can't go without acknowledging the staff of the Marquette City Police Department. The men and women of the Marquette Police Department have gone above and beyond in assisting not only Lieutenant Grimm and Lieutenant Wury on this process, but working as a team to get to where we are today. So I'm really, really excited and honored to be at this step in the process, and we are looking to become the first department in the Upper Peninsula to achieve the accreditation process. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ryan Grimm for a couple of words, and then possibly some of the assessors for any comments they may have.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Commission, for hearing us out here. It's been a huge process that Lieutenant Wury and I took upon ourselves at his direction to get into this accreditation process. And once we started looking at it, we saw the benefit of it, which basically what it is is the MACP came up with one hundred and five best practices in law enforcement. So what we do is we had to take a look at ourselves, a lot of internal reflection on our department, look through our policy and procedure manual, make sure that we were fitting those standards. And if we didn't, if there's some that we're lacking in... A lot of it was documentation, some training and that kind of stuff. We dialed in our policies to meet those hundred and five standards. So what they came up today is to look at all of our policies and procedures, do some ride-alongs with the officers, and kind of just analyze our department, make sure we're meeting those standards that are put in place. With those hundred and five standards, there is a lot of proofs of compliance. And if you guys are familiar with any kind of accreditation, like with hospitals and schools, you have to show the proof of compliance, and within this process, there's about over four hundred proofs of compliance that we had to show them. So that's what we were doing today. And they are the experts on what the accreditation is, and I'd kind of like to have Chief Mills step up and maybe talk about the accreditation process itself. He's been... He works for the Portage Police Department downstate. And they were accredited prior to this MACP with KLEA, which is a nationwide organization. So now he's one of our contacts here, along with Heather, so.
I didn't prepare any remarks, but I'll try to be brief. So just a brief history on accreditation, similar to universities and hospitals and other educational institutions. There was a commission formed years ago, and it was KLEA, so that stands for the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. It really... international organization, Canada, Mexico, and U.S. They established standards for departments to comply with. Michigan wanted to form their own commission and write their own standards. And luckily for us, the New Jersey State Commission on Law Enforcement Standards agreed to share their standards with us. So a large committee was formed, representative chiefs, agencies that had already gone through the KLEA accreditation. I was on that committee. Insurance leaders, I think your insurance provider was there, MML, LEAF, MMRA. So we basically spent several months looking at New Jersey's standards. And then, of course, everyone in the room familiar with KLEA accreditation had that background, and from that, we bore these hundred and five standards. And they are the best practices that we thought that we could have any agency in the state of Michigan, whether you're a department of, you know, a handful of people, or, you know, a large agency like Grand Rapids or Detroit, you can comply with these standards. So you should be very proud that this agency chose to do this process. It's a self-assessment process where you look at yourself and try to make yourself better. And this agency has laid a really good foundation based on these standards to move forward. It'll protect the agency and the community. It'll set standards for behavior, and you should be very proud that they've gone through this process. And really, from someone downstate that's been in this process a long time, you should be really proud because now Marquette will be the leaders in all the agencies and the UP that want to go forward with this process. So I thank you for your time, and it's been a wonderful visit. I love your community. Thank you.
Thank you for having us. I will say that one of my initial observations in coming here this morning was the strong commitment and investment that all of the members of the Marquette City Police Department have in this accreditation process. And I think you heard a very wonderful top-down umbrella overview of what the accreditation process is, but at the end of the day, our community members say, "What does this mean for me? What does this mean for me as a resident of this community?" And when the standards are woven into policies, you create the best practice with guidelines, procedures, criteria. And the end result is you have staff members of your policing agency providing a consistent service to your community that's guided by these best practices and these policies, and so that there is not unfair or biased treatment, there's not disparate treatment. And it's in line with what the stakeholders across the nation are looking for in best practices in policing. And it sets everyone up for success. So I'm not sure that I have much else to add, other than it's been a very joyful time here visiting to really see the investment from the top-down and from the bottom-up in this organization. And I think that your community will be the better for it as you move through the process. Thank you.
Thank you to all of you for being a part of this process. I know you've spent a lot of time and effort in getting to where we're at right now, and thank you for making the trip up. We do want to encourage the public tomorrow between the hours of nine a.m. and eleven a.m. to call in or email the Marquette City Police Department. You can speak directly with one of the assessors. This is open to the public, citizens, anybody that has comment regarding our accreditation procedure and what we're looking for in the accreditation process. I want to once again thank the whole police department, everybody, from our patrol officers to our detectives, to our front office staff, to our administrators, to our supervisors. Everybody has played a role in where we are today and the assessment that we are undergoing right now. They've all been stakeholders in it, and have all had tremendous input on where we want to go as a police department and the service we provide this community. So once again, I'd like to thank you very much.
Commissioners, are there any questions? Commissioner Smith?
Thank you for being here tonight. I don't have a question, just a comment. It sounds like things are going well, so fingers crossed that you're awarded an accreditation tomorrow. Nice work, team.
Other questions? Commissioner Campana?
We are very happy to have you here. We are very happy to see this accreditation taking place. I hope the residents of the city realize this is a benefit for the city and the community. If I got it right, I'm assuming that this just shows that our police... if they pass accreditation, we hope they will, we think they will, that our police department is operating at a high standard. We can have faith and trust in that. And hopefully, another plus would be, as grants become available, the fact that we have accreditation would be favorably for the city. I'm sure there's other many benefits. I'm not aware of them, but I see it as all being good for the city and the community. So thank you, and we appreciate the police department doing this.
Commissioner Frazier?
Again, thanks a lot for your work. You guys did a great job. Since you guys have experience with Canadian and all that, how does our police department do with delegated work compared to the Canadian departments? Because we're pretty close to Canada. Just wonder how our chief does delegate the work to the Canadians do.
Any other commissioners? If not, personally allow me to please add that we didn't put Ms. Brum up to that just when she came up and spoke. I mean, that was totally off the cuff and very serendipitous. I would be curious, how many other cities in the state have been accredited? Are there a fair number, or is there a...
Yeah, I believe there's about twelve right now, but there's probably close to thirty that are in the process in varying stages of the accreditation process. You know, it's a... We've been working on this for almost a year and a half, Ryan and Mark, along with our staff. So once this is done, once the assessors gain the information, they go back down, they meet, they prepare a written report for the commission, and then ultimately, it's the commission's decision whether or not to approve the agency for accreditation. So it's a little bit longer process, even after this onsite assessment, but we're looking forward to that challenge.
Thank you. Obviously, we are thrilled that you're here. We're thrilled that the department is going through the process. The Marquette Police Department has always been a terrific leader in this community. They really are our thin blue line. And to be able to reinforce the men and women of that department is really terrific. We would look forward, certainly, to getting the final report and to hopefully being able to improve from what you've discovered and continue to be the very best that we can. I want to commend the leadership of the department for taking the step forward to do it. As an old Army guy, I know what the command of readiness inspections used to be. I know the drill we had to go through, and I know the detail that people went down and looked, and the difficulty, and the angst, and the fear, and the uncertainty of having other people look at your stuff. But ultimately, it works out to everyone's advantage. So again, thank you very much for taking that initiative. And this whole commission certainly wishes you the very best and a safe return home.
Thank you.
That brings us then to the consent agenda. Commissioners, you do have a copy of the consent agenda in front of you, and I would ask you to... for a motion for acceptance, if possible. Commissioner Schlegel?
I would make the motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Any further comments?
Yes, excuse me. Thank you.
Commissioner Frazier? Is a second? Can you say, "I motion to second the agenda"?
I motion to second the agenda.
Thank you. So we have that now on tape, and it's legal. Any further comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor? Say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero. That brings us down to New Business, number four, which is the City Commission Rules of Procedure. Madam Clerk, if you will read the document, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Background: Each year, the commission adopts rules of procedure to help the commission run an efficient meeting and to deal with the public and the media in a positive manner. The attached version places the rules in outline format with suggested changes in yellow. Fiscal effect: None. Recommendation: Discuss the City Commission Rules of Procedure, number 200301, as amended, and approve the rules along with any changes the commission should determine, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, you've had the rules in front of you for some time. They were distributed with the packets on Friday. We certainly had review and submission copies prior to that. We can either discuss them beforehand, we can have a motion for acceptance, or we can go for a motion. Your Honor, before we do that, I think a couple of people reserved... I'm sorry. You're correct. And that would be Mr... Ms. Brum, please. Ms. Brum was number one. I'm gonna do this right one time.
Good evening. Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. I'm gonna start with a part of my background most people in the room don't know. I was in the Toastmasters Organization for seven and a half years. And I did it because public speaking was part of my job all the way. And one of the most valuable skills it taught me was how to analyze a meeting, presenters, what worked, what didn't work, and how to improve my own performance based on those analyses. And I like rules. I like rules for meetings. I like that they're written down. I like that everybody can understand them in advance. My number one comment here is on subsection five, Public Participation, Rules of Decorum. There's been a suggested for an amendment relating to what people in the audience should focus on in terms of how they address the commission. And this is a kind of a fine line to draw because you have to have public comment be public. You can't edit it in advance because it's free speech, and it is essentially the difference between what we are as a nation versus what other places are where people are terrified to stand up in front of the rulemakers. So you've got that on one side, and on the other side, you've got the absolute necessity for rules in a chamber because if you let one person speak in a way that takes the subject off the subject and makes it personal, it takes away from the subject matter, what you're talking about. So the fine line you're gonna draw is a tough one, and I wanted to acknowledge that in advance. My suggestion is, under Rules of Decorum, there's a new requirement that people who speak address the commission, and I basically refrain from personalities and address the subject matter of the commission. And I'm in favor of that. What I'd like to propose is that that burden also be put on the members of the commission. And this is something that I've observed for a year now, that many times we have very quiet meetings, and other times we have meetings where there's a back and forth. Somebody says something in public comment, and then commissions respond. And what I'd like to encourage the commissioners and the people who sit behind the bench to think about is, we don't want to be like the people on television who like to get in soundbites so they make it to the public news. We want to be perceived as the grown-ups in the room. And I think that the police accreditation shows how much of a grown-up we are. So I'd like to encourage the commission to make the requirement for decorum on the people who speak at this podium apply to everybody who sits behind that table as well. And that, Mr. Mayor and Ms. Mayor Protem, if she were here, would also give you a place to rely upon in the event that a meeting went sideways on you. That's my recommendation. It's not directed at any one individual. It's directed at everybody in the room, and myself included. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Verto, I think you had also reserved time?
Frank Javerto, these are my opinions. Two areas of concern arise from this year's amendments to the Rule of Procedure. Page two reads, "The meetings may be broadcast live on Government Access Channel 191." It used to read that meetings shall be broadcast live. Under what circumstances can we not assume that all meetings will be broadcast live? Otter is the sentence under Rules of Decorum, item two on page nine, that reads, "Each person who addresses the commission at its meetings shall not utter loud, threatening, or abusive language engaged in personal attack on a commissioner, officer, or employee of the city that is unrelated to the matter in which he or she performs his or her duties," end quote. Two questions arise here. Whom the added portion may pertain to, and how this wording got onto the page to begin with. This change pertains to persons addressing the commission. Because I address this board more than anyone, I can't help but wonder if this somehow pertains to me. Several times, I've stated, maybe in different words, that I... I don't criticize any member or employee in a way that's unrelated to the matter in which he or she performs his or her duties. I said that in response to at least two members who criticized me in ways that had no relation to my participation here, specifically Ms. Reynolds, who cited me for what occurred at a store at least 14 years ago, and a member who wasn't invited back, who said, "I looked as if I needed to go to the bathroom." If I've ever criticized anyone in a way that would violate this change, please give us types of those examples, because the way it reads, I've been in total agreement and compliance all along. What you ought to do is establish this Rule of Decorum for yourselves. The other concern is when and where this change was written, such that it appears in this packet to begin with. There surely was no public process, as was the case four years ago, when closing comment was stolen from us. You know, then we didn't have closing comment either. But it was because this board didn't have an answer for just one person. Yet they denied the closing comment from everybody. This leads me to suspect, based on 21 years of commission dealings, that you might be up to something surreptitious again. Regardless of your wording and your authority, you'll fall subject to the tenets of the Open Meetings Act. Please make sure to clarify this change with your attorney, because if any issue arises as a result, I'll most definitely run it by an attorney or two.
Anyone else to address the commission? Hearing none. We can move on with the city business. Commissioners, what is your wish? I can have a motion for accepting the... Commissioner Campana?
If I'm reading this right, I would like to make the motion to accept the Commission Rules of Procedure 2003-01 as amended, along with any changes that we may make.
Is that good? That's... I believe that's good. Is there a second to that motion? Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Commissioner Campana, any further comments?
This is pretty cut and dry. We do this every year, and there's very little change as we see it here. I did have a question on page 16.
Page what?
Page 16, if I have that right. Paragraph two. Everybody there?
So, on the written copy, that would be miscellaneous, which is section 7A2.
Five, D2. Five, D2. Public Participation, Rules of Decorum.
Right, number two.
Kind of like what we were talking about.
For clarity, if anyone's following at home, that is... What's being discussed is public participation, which is Roman numeral five, and then number two under that, persons addressing. Please continue.
Okay, the only... As I was reading through this, my only question was, it says, and we're talking personal attacks here, on a commissioner, officer, or employee of the city. But also, and I've seen this a couple times over the years, where a speaker will get up, and all of a sudden, he's criticizing or complaining, saying derogatory remarks about someone who is perhaps sitting in the audience, or perhaps somebody who is not even here, someone who is not an employee of the city, who's not a commissioner. So, it's, you know, should that be added in also? Just... Or is that already covered, Mr. Attorney? I would ask you that.
Yeah, let me answer the question, and let me start from the beginning. I wrote this language. Over the past year, and even before that, there's always been a concern about personal attacks by members of the public when they're giving their comments. I've heard that forever. The purpose of this language, and I took it right from an Attorney General opinion, the only, except for abusive language and threatening language that we've already got in this rule, anyone who engages in a personal attack on a commissioner that is unrelated to the manner in which he or she performs his duty, that is prohibited. And that's what the law says is prohibited. But if it's a, what we would call a personal attack, maybe saying something that's derogatory about a commissioner in the way he or she performs his duty, that's allowed by law under the Open Meetings Act. That's why I wrote it this way. It comes right, like I said, right out of the law. But that particular paragraph has other language in it that might satisfy you, because it says, "Each person shall not utter loud, threatening, and abusive language, or engage in any other disorderly conduct which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the commission meeting." So, there is other language to protect you in what you're just concerned about. But as far as personal attacks on a member of the commission, or an employee of the city, or an officer of the city, it is allowed if it's related to the manner in which they perform their duty. If it's unrelated, then it's not allowed. And that's why we put it in there the way it is, that you see it there for that reason. I couldn't go beyond that. There was some thought that maybe we could just eliminate all personal attacks of any kind, but this is what the law provides, and that's why I put it in that way. I could... If I could just back up for a second, because I know Ms. Brum asked that it be a two-way street, which gave me a chance to look at the rules in more detail. And there is a rule under Conduct of Meetings, which is Roman 2F2, which says that the presiding officer shall enforce orderly conduct at meetings, and any member of the commission or other officer who shall fail to conduct himself in an orderly manner at the meeting shall be guilty of misconduct in office. So, that's actually a little bit more stringent than what Ms. Brum was looking for. But that's right in the rules, and the presiding officer has that authority. So, I think that's really covered. This other thing that we were just talking about has to do with public comment. There was one other thing that, since we're on the subject, that the, I believe, Mr. Verto raised about the minutes of meetings, and the meetings being broadcast on live Government Access Channel. I changed that word from meetings shall to meetings may, because there have been times when it wasn't possible to comply. I mean, the intent is to broadcast, but there may be times when we can't. And with a shall, we don't have any wiggle room. So, that was the answer to that one. That's why we put may in there. It's not that we don't intend to do it.
Mr. Campana, you have to continue?
Okay, to finish, thank you. And I agree, as commissioners, I think we realize that what we do here is subject to criticism, and we don't mind getting it. You know, I don't mind. You know, you deal with it. My only question on that was, I just didn't want somebody from the audience getting up there and saying something derogatory about somebody who's home watching it, or he doesn't like him. But I think that it is covered under, as you say, other disorderly conduct. I think the mayor would be able to pick that apart. So, I'm okay with it. I don't think we need to add to it. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Hill?
Actually, yeah, my question was also about the change with the access on TV, just and which you already answered, but that was my other... My only question was, so it's the sort of technical difficulties, please stand by, kind of language?
Kind, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Any other comments? Commissioner Frazier?
Everything looks good. I think the, you know, the stuff you and everybody's been talking about, the Rules of Decorum, all the stuff is, I mean, as commissioner, we signed on for being criticized. That's when, if we disagree with something, we do it, or what the city did, we can be criticized. But if you criticize a member of the commissioner's family, or somebody else, like Mr. Campana said, and not in the room, or past commissioners or mayors that have passed away or no longer with us, that's just a little different, you know? So, I think if you, you know, criticize somebody that's already sitting here, that can take it and defend themselves if they have to, when you criticize somebody with their person's family, or maybe a past mayor or commissioner that worked for the city that's no longer with us, that's a different thing, you know? And because those people still have families in town. That's the thing is, just remember, you know, you can say what you want about us, but you criticize somebody else that's no longer with us, like somebody that gave a good speech about Mr. Baldini, that's great. But when you criticize people like Mr. Kivil and places like that, we don't need to hear that. You know, we all think these people do great things for the city, and we don't want to hear bad things about them. So, they can't defend themselves, and their family don't need to come here and defend them. So, this one thing, it's like they have in there, you can work on that maybe, just say, no more, you know, comment about us, but, you know, nothing about commissioner's family, or somebody that's passed away.
Any other commissioner comment? Let me wrap up the comment then, just by indicating to people that, you know, the term "commission" obviously refers to this legislative body in the state of Michigan, rather, in the city of Marquette. But the term also applies to the length of the service. In other words, this commission will last for less than a year, from election to election. And then there will be another commission. So, it becomes a different opportunity now for another set of rules, as that commission may choose to operate. And the rules that we're discussing are essentially the rules of how this commission will work within this chamber. In other words, how we call on each other, what rules of order we follow, how we put in agendas together. They are, in effect, our roadmap to how we conduct meetings. It's not a document beyond that. And of course, it's all available on the city website for anybody that may wish to really get into the Arcadia of government. Commissioners, if there is no other comment, I would... And certainly, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Right? We've got a second. We've got a motion and a second. So, all those commissioners in favor of accepting these rules, please indicate so by saying yes.
Yes.
Any commissioner not in favor, please indicate by saying no. Hearing none. The motion passes six-zero. That brings us down to number five, the Community Master Plan Amendment. Madam Clerk, if you will please read the document.
Thank you, sir. Background: The city of Marquette adopted its most recent Community Master Plan, CMP, on August 18, 2015. The Michigan Planning Enabling Act recommends that a CMP be reviewed every five years, but the Planning Commission acted to provide an intermediate update to the CMP per its recommendation of the 2015 CMP to review the CMP for appropriate updates annually. The Planning Commission has prepared an update to the CMP. The amendments were developed over the course of more than a dozen work sessions at regular meetings, through holding an open house, and conducting two joint work sessions with the city commission, where the CMP amendment was a major item of discussion. The Planning Commission held a public comment period for the 2018 CMP amendment between October 15 and November 25. Public comments received by the Planning Commission are provided in a separate document. That document also presents updates that were made to the future land use map and proposed zoning map, as well as minor changes to organizational items in CMP. Finally, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on the amendments at their meeting on December 4, 2018. It was moved by Jake Cardillo, seconded by S. Mittelfeld, and approved nine to zero that after review of the proposed 2018 Community Master Plan Amendment, and after conducting a public hearing and careful consideration of the contents of the documents and maps, the Planning Commission finds that the proposed text and map amendments are justified and appropriate, and therefore are approved. Fiscal effect none. Recommendation: Approve the Community Master Plan Amendment as presented by the Planning Commission. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Mr. Verto, you had reserved time on this item.
Frank Verto, these are my opinions. Lacking the time to review every page of the plan, I studied the map, which for the most part is encouraging. Several concerns arise, however. The cliff-style green space appears too narrow, considering removing the Boulevard westward. Mixed use is shown in orange extending too far east across the parcel. Once the plan for the frivolous 26-unit office park was abandoned, there was talk of four parcels at the west edge running north and south, but the proposed width seemed narrower. To date, only one of those parcels is occupied. South of the golf course, a long rectangular area of mixed use is shown on the Hartwood tract. This map clearly depicts the potential impact of not implementing the land use philosophy I've tried to express for 21 years. Mixed land use is not compatible with the adjacent recreational uses to the north and south. Even the Forest Service has written of using this philosophy when determining the placement of old growth corridors, although they seldom adhere to it. This board recently dealt with these parcels, incognizant of that philosophy, not so much on Parcels 11 and 12, but on Parcels 9 and 10 that are deeper in the woods, and contiguous with both the golf course and Hartwood acreage that is slated for preservation. We've already seen too much devastation in this area after 251 acres of woods to die for were obliterated for a golf course expansion. Decent components of the plan are also noticed, including the location of several preserved areas, and our need to preserve small nooks and crannies within our neighborhoods. This will help Marquette neighborhoods to maintain their character, unlike so many denser cities where every square inch is developed and the character totally lost. Of course, this doesn't mean our nooks and crannies will remain undeveloped as Marquette grows, and every acre becomes in higher demand. We've lost too much already. In the past, we've been unable to amend reports such as this, because the commission is unwilling to fine-tune them, regardless of whether portions are wrong or the depictions aren't clear. It's all or nothing. Now, Mr. Schlegel may have a point that this is needed to be handled at the Planning Commission level, but we still need a mechanism. You people are asked to become more willing to entertain second readings instead of so often rushing items off our agendas.
Commissioners, is there a motion for accepting or approving the Community Master Plan Amendment as presented? Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to approve the Community Master Plan Amendment as presented by the Planning Commission.
Is there a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
I would second the motion.
Commissioner Frazier, any further comments? Commissioner Frazier, no comments. Commissioner Schlegel, any comments?
Yes, and I'm glad that our audience member brought this up, because after several years of working on this with the Planning Commission when I was serving on it, not once did I see you show up at any of the meetings, or workshops, or anything that had to do with master plans. So, I'm glad that you're getting a chance to catch up and read on it, read about it now, because you're way behind the ball. This is fabulous. I'm really excited. Dennis, thank you for engineering this with Dave and Andrea and the rest of the Planning Commission, to make this what we had intended it to be a couple years ago when we first had the revision, and get this to be a living and breathing document that we can update and utilize continuously, instead of letting it be forgotten about for a number of years like it was prior to the decision to do that. So, I think that this is a fabulous demonstration of how we are being a more progressive and aggressive community, and keeping up with the day-to-day workings, and paying attention to what the community wants through feedback, continuous feedback, since it was originally adopted. And I think that, you know, this is what we need to keep doing in order to make sure that we are sticking with the times, making the right decisions for our community.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Hill?
And I second the, and applaud the folks who worked on this for many, many meetings and very much time, the staff, and the volunteers, and community members. I want to just take a minute to read off the recommendations in the document, just real quick. There are six. One is understanding that our population is probably going to continue to increase, and things are going to keep going up on that level, which is encouraging, that there... And then there's things that are a little bit more concrete around actions and policies. One of the... And those are having bike routes that are marked and integrated with our tremendous path network, a land and transportation planning done for Lake Shore Boulevard for the entire distance. for Lake Shore Boulevard for the, um, the entire distance, uh, a coordinated transit plan with Marktran, um, is also listed as one of the recommendations. Continuing to monitor the short-term rental cap that's currently at two hundred and fifty and, from what I understand, is working well, but continuing to watch that, uh, that there be a s- the, a process put in place to begin to develop a city policy on housing affordability, and in particular, that housing is affordability, which is the idea that, that we, our housing is becoming harder and harder for people to be able to purchase at the salaries that people make around here, how do we, is there ways that the city can help address that? And then, as noted, there are new maps on zoning and land use, which clarify and make things, uh, I think simpler for folks to understand what's allowed and not allowed, and where they do their business and where they live. And those are really terrific set, as, as Paul said, that really help us keep current with things as, um, as technology changes, as needs change, and I really thank everyone for all the hard work they did.
Any, uh, Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. The one comment I wanted to make is I am curious how this housing, um, city policy will be addressed moving forward, and I'm interested in, um, getting that moving along as quickly as possible. I know Dennis was maybe going to speak on that.
Yes, Commissioner, that's important to remember that the master plan itself is just a summary of the recommendations by the community, so it'd really be up to the city commission to take the recommendations out of here and, and, and advance, advance it into policy through the creation of a committee later on, most likely when you are doing strategic planning or something along those lines.
Thank you for clarifying. Looking forward to that happening.
Anyone else? Mr. Stackwitz, we normally address that type of prioritization during the, oh, what's that, we'll, we'll do it during budget session and we will also do it, uh, during the, I want to say agenda setting, it's not agenda setting, it's the prioritization of work and projects.
Yeah, we, we generally look through the, through the budget process. We ask each department, the city manager asks each department to lay out their tasks and goals, um, generally through the strategic planning process, which is another living document that we update about every eighteen months. And that in turn is used to actually take to the commission and ask for funding to advance certain things based upon all of these recommendations and the different myriad of plans that we have throughout the community.
Thank you. What I, what I want the folks to understand was that there is a process, and it's not just the commission sitting down and saying, oh, today, let's go do this. It's done in a very deliberative method so that we can tie in not only the project at hand, the task at hand, but with the funding at hand too, so you can come up with a coherent, rational way to get the objective accomplished. So that takes time, doesn't happen with snap of the, of the fingers, but it is effective. Any other comments from commissioners? Hearing none, we have a motion, we have a second, and we're ready for a vote. All those, um, in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Anyone, uh, any commissioner against the motion, please signify by saying no. Hearing none, the, uh, motion passes six zero. That brings us to our second public comment period. Anyone wishing to make a public comment? Anyone wishing to make a public comment? This is your opportunity.
Uh, hi, my name's Matt Ludenberger, fourteen oh six, Garfield Ave, here in Marquette, Michigan. Uh, first, um, this kind of threw me off, there's two more Mondays left in the year, so I kind of thought this meeting was going to happen next week or the week after, but anyways. Also, on that note then, Happy, uh, New Year and Merry Christmas to everybody. Um, since we won't be around, I wish everybody a white Christmas, wherever it may be. On the third note, I'm here for a transparency request. Uh, I noticed that most of the changes that you put in place for, uh, the procedures went from aggressive conversation, uh, verbiage to passive conversation verbiage, where you went from, "You shall do a bunch of things" to "You may do a bunch of things." Uh, to be honest, Mr. Frazier, I wouldn't know you were wearing a sweater if you didn't broadcast this live, so congratulations for the sweater. I wish more of you would have partaken, it would have been fun to watch on the end of the year, um, the city commission meeting. On that note though, the more you, you say you may do something, the less likely we are as publication, or public, to come up and actually speak. I mean, the last meeting, I heard Mr., uh, Mayor, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I heard you say that as a commission, you all can do something as a whole, but individually you can't do anything. So that hearkened back to my memory of when Mr. Coyne was in office and he talked about having a, uh, sled dog, um, picture where the commission reminded him of a sled dog team and the mayor was the leader of the team and everybody else just kind of went along. That, that's kind of a anti-democratic thought, and to roll that in, Mr. Schlegel, you tonight made a point about how one of our citizens was maybe behind the ball because we didn't speak at a public comment session for the Planning Commission. I have to admit, this is tough for me to come up here, I've got a minute left and I'm honestly taking time out of work. Coming up at a meeting at three o'clock in the afternoon is not something that most of your city can do. So the more meetings you can put online or in the public realm, the more transparent you become. And frankly, I'd go all the way and just say, hey, after the meeting, you release all the emails, or at least after your terms, you release all your emails to the public and let us, uh, proceed through that. Because without us, I mean, there's only three people speaking in the public here right now, without us bringing up our concerns, we're just listening to you talk. No offense, but I don't want to listen to you guys talk, I want you guys to do something that we as a, as citizens are concerned about. I want you to address things. Um, every time somebody talks about snow, it seems like the locals tend to push away at the outer, uh, residents. I'm a transplant, but I've been here for twelve years, and yet I still get laughed at when I talk about the snow. Please, Happy New Year.
Anyone else to speak to the commission? Anyone else?
Margaret Brum, four oh four, East Magnetic, and I figure I'm not going to waste my last three-minute time slot of the year. First of all, it's been a great year. Uh, coming to the commission meetings has been the highlight of the last year for me. Uh, when I decided to run for office, my oldest brother gave me the best advice he ever gave me, which is if you're going to do this, you got to go to the meetings, you got to start to understand the process. One of the things I've noticed and I want to encourage the commissioners to do is get more students in here. I've been in the room where you've had, uh, uh, high school students, you've had college students. I would recommend that you reach out to the elementary schools as well for, um, uh, an opportunity to come and see the city government in action at an early age. This was denied to me, it was denied to members of my generation. It wasn't even a question of we were invited, we wouldn't be considered welcome. And every time I've watched these students, I've watched them learn, sometimes against their own will, but I've watched them learn how things happen, and I want to encourage that. Secondly, uh, Mayor Stonehouse is correct, you didn't coerce me into saying nice things about the police department. I myself have lived through many different audits, and I know that a question of an audit time is when people remember the things that don't go right. And though I was talking to those people in advance, introducing myself, and I said, "We want to hear something good about the police department," and they said, "Yes," and I said, "Would you like to hear that on the record?" And they said, "That would be very helpful." So I stood up and I said it on the record. I very rarely say stuff in private that I don't say in public. And that being said, I encourage and applaud the city of Marquette for reaching out for this audit. It is a tremendous challenge to any department to have outsiders come in and say, "How come?" Or, "How not come?" It's bravery of a sense that most people don't embrace. Most of us don't want to be looked at that closely, and when you embrace it and you have professionals come up and say, "Good job," this is a talking point for Marquette being the true leader of the Upper Peninsula of Michigan. And my third point for what it is, is part of the reason I'm worried about decorum is for what I see on television each night when I watch the news. We have to be grownups. We have to be leaders as grownups, and grownup behavior is very hard to define. It's like the Supreme Court Justice who said he, he couldn't define pornography, but he knew it when he saw it. Well, we all know when we see people who are acting like grownups, and we all know when we see people who aren't. And my number one concern is that we continue to act like grownups, because what we're talking about here, taxes and sewers and snow removal, and where, uh, you can put a sign and where you can have music, this is life and death stuff for people to want to stay in our community. And I myself struggle with this, to be a grownup twenty-four seven, ask anybody in my family. So when I come here and I challenge you to be grownups twenty-four seven, I'm, I'm embracing a challenge that I want us all to share, because the more you lead by example, the better Marquette is. Thank you for your service. Good night.
Frank Jeff Verito, these are my opinions. December tenth, Mr. Frazier mentioned the appearance of the former coal pile at today's Lower Harbor Park. One man told me he preferred the lake shore back then because he could enjoy the immediate shoreline without the throngs of people. I can attest to this philosophy from what's happened at Founders. The eastern third of the property was much, much nicer and more natural appearing than what's left there today. Mr. Frazier doesn't account for the fact that our bluffs on lake shore, including where the coal pile was, was natural for many thousands of years, prior to settlers chasing off the Native Americans and stealing the land that they cared for. Mr. Frazier also neglected to mention the ugly row of to- townhouses at Founders, the birdhouses, and his own house, those being as out of place as any development in town. Of course, he doesn't feel these properties are on our lake shore, but they're well within our lake shore district and pose eyesores to all who seek to enjoy it. He then claimed that the house at three forty East Ridge was in bad shape. That's entirely untrue. I toured almost every room of that house, including the basement. The interior needed updating, but the house sat perfectly on the property with the most awesome section of wooded bluff along our entire shore. Mr. Frazier ignored the gist of my concerns, those being the destroyed bluff and the accessibility aspect. Now we have a fancier, oversized house that's so squeezed onto the property, two setbacks needed to be approved by the BZA. Of course, the BZA kissed up to the owner the same way Mr. Frazier did. They know each other, they do business together. Just because a property does a lot for a community doesn't give them the right to impose on others. Family names ought not to dictate who's worthy of special privileges, especially when it's to the detriment of neighbors and people in wheelchairs. After the meeting, Mr. Angeli responded to this concern stating that there's an active construction permit for the property which allows the owner to traverse the sidewalk. Why then was I not informed of this, one of the four times I asked, twice of his office, twice of Public Works? I even mentioned that very possibility for their consideration, yet they kept saying that requisition was out for the sidewalk squares to be replaced even if after the snow flies. There are bigger matters across town to resolve, but what does it take to get a prompt and correct response out of these people? We're sick and tired of being lied to and talked around. Mr. Frazier is thanked for responding to many of my concerns, however, his responses are very selective, like those from a member who's no longer around, maybe in part for responding that way. It's hoped that this new commission will be more cognizant of its past flaws, admitted its mistakes, and work toward improving. At that time, our residents may be more willing to fill our numerous board vacancies. And Ms. Smith and the manager have been talking for over a half minute, and she's one of the people who I wrote this comment for. And Mr. Stonehouse is, is looking down, doing I don't know what for like three quarters of, of all my comments tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Verdo. Commissioners, time for commissioner comment. Uh, Ms. Smith, Commissioner Smith, would you lead, please?
Sure, I have two comments. One, there is a work session on January seventh about proposal one and how it may impact the city of Marquette, so I would say any interested residents, please come and join us for that work session. Um, also, I wanted to just wish all the residents and the city commission happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first and foremost, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. Uh, it's a great time of year. More light and power put on there. Uh, Christmas light display contest, I finally bit the bullet and got involved. I'm sure I'm not going to come out on the upper end of this as far as the cost versus the return, but I thoroughly have enjoyed my holiday, uh, thus far, and I encourage other people to get involved in whatever capacity they feel, but to, uh, to really experience the holidays this time of year. I would really like to go back and, uh, and again, congratulate Chief Rebal and his crew on the accreditation process that they're going through. This is, uh, best practices, I mean, come on, this is exactly what we should be doing. You guys are knocking out of the park and, and best of luck in, in the process there. Um, other than that, I just want to say, uh, in, in relation to what, uh, Mr. Campenzi mentioned earlier, it, uh, it has been a year now since, uh, Mayor, uh, has passed on, and I have to say that taking, uh, taking his position on the, on the commission has been a very daunting task. Um, I know that I could never fill his shoes and I never expect to, but, um, to, to remember his efforts, to remember his efforts throughout his entire, uh, career, um, in the U.P. and everything that he did for our community was, is something that we can't forget, so, um, I, I will keep him dear and near to my heart, and I hope that we all reflect back and, and appreciate, uh, his service. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Commissioner Campena.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, not much to say, um, in regards to the accreditation that the police department's going through, I hope our community recognizes, uh, how much this is going to be for our community and it shows what a first-class police department that we have and we will have, and will always have, so, uh, appreciate all your doing, Chief, and, um, we're sure it'll go well. And yes, in regards to former Mayor Tom Baldini, uh, tragic loss a year ago, uh, we lost a leader that, um, he would have served this city well. He had, he, oh, I worked with him closely for those three, four years and, uh, got to know him well, and he was the type of person where he would, he loved this city, he worked tirelessly for it. I was anxious to see what he was going to do, he would have been a great leader for our city. I don't think anybody can disagree how valuable he was to our community, so we, we do miss him. Lastly, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. Thank you.
Happy holidays, everybody. I don't want to say Merry Christmas, I don't want to offend anybody, because I think it's funny, you look online, you know, what's the nice things to give political incorrect? Merry Christmas, could be, Happy New Year, what's this to be politically incorrect? So we as politicians can't see, can't say Merry Christmas, see Happy Holidays, that way it doesn't offend anybody, but I'm sure the close relationship was put on a plot of land that they kind of own already, and was a beach that was no longer, wasn't really used by the public that much, except for some surfers, been surfers since a while, and some occasional boats by the boat, but anchored on the mooring field. But I mean, we still have a little bit of beach, I mean, there's all that beach, McCurry's Cove, Picket Rocks, Prescott, At Prescott, South Beach, all the way in Harvey, there's, there's just beach all over the place, so I mean, as far as, you know, one acre land, the big deal, but if the person likes to comment to the city, you know, you want to come, like you said, you want to comment about what we're doing right now, that's fine, we can take it, you want to comment, maybe, I can take it, but you say, "I've been here for twenty years and the, this thing did this ten years ago, this place did it ten years," and like Mr. Stonehouse, that wasn't our commission, that was a previous commission, so it doesn't really make any difference to us to say, "Well, the commission did this ten years ago, I told the commission you should have done this fifteen years ago." Kind of falls on deaf ears, but we listen to everybody's thoughts and we appreciate everybody's thoughts. And, you know, like I said, Happy Holidays, everybody, and I wear my Mike Angeles sweater tonight just for everybody.
And I want to, thank you. I have a couple of things I want to say. Uh, one is also, uh, congratulations to the police department, I, um, I used to run an organization that was involved in the ISO fourteen thousand, which is an accreditation process for environmental businesses, and it's, again, as everyone has said, it's a quite a daunting, it's a, uh, worthwhile, but, um, can be daunting, it's a, it's a lot of, uh, making sure that, that what is set in a piece of paper actually flows out to the staff, and that's the most important thing, and I really appreciate that and feel, uh, I'm really glad that we're, we're taking on that and making sure that that happens throughout the entire department. Um, regarding, um, former Mayor Baldini, um, I had the privilege of, uh, being at the Soapbox Challenge, uh, where, uh, twelve high school students spoke about issues of great importance to them for three minutes at a time, it was an incredible event where, uh, and it's, it's sort of the other side of that, where giving people, allowing our young people to speak what's giving people, allowing our young people to speak what's on their mind and say that maybe not everything is going as well as we would like and what we could be doing better. And I'm inspired by that. I have found the kids to be real and honest and wanting to have us do better, because while I think things are going well in a lot of respects in Marquette, there are certainly areas we could be doing better, and the kids are certainly up to the challenge of letting us know when maybe we're not doing all that we can. That's, of course, what teenagers are supposed to do, and, but they did it with such eloquence and it was done as a tribute to Tom Baldini. So it was a really wonderful event. And I'm looking forward into 2019. In addition to the work session on the 7th, on the question of the marijuana, moving into recreational legalized use within the state while yet still illegal at the federal level, there's a lot of complicated issues to work through, so we absolutely want to hear from as many folks as possible at that work session. Then there's one coming up on the 16th and on the Parks and Rec Master Plan, which is another one of those terrific opportunities to get involved on what's going to happen with our parks and recs in this community and a chance to speak up about what you want to see. And then tentatively right now on the agenda, coming up later in January, is a conversation about what we're going to do about Lake Shore Boulevard. And I'm getting up to speed on that. I, as the newest person here, and I have a lot of questions about what we're going to do. And I think, as I've been talking to community members about it, they also have a lot of questions, and this has been a multi-multi-year process going back five or six years, the process of looking at what this is going to turn, how we can deal with the fact that the break wall was extended, and in extending the break wall, we are sending the force of Lake Superior directly onto valuable pieces of land that this community really cares about. And I, I have been hearing a lot about how much people care about this, but the question is, do we care about it $8 million worth? And, and that has, and that number has stuck in my brain and is something I'm very concerned about, given all the other things that are happening and given that this planning started before we knew We Energies was going to shut down and before we raised water rates 20%. I, I'm looking forward to a rigorous conversation on some of these important questions going forward in 2019 and look forward to the new year coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification, the breakwater change was not made by the city of Marquette. That was the Army Corps of Engineers that did that. And, you know, they certainly have admitted that error. Something to think about, you know, we're, we're all very proud that the police are going through the accreditation, but I want you to think of police and I want you to think of fire, and I want you to think just how little we actually interact with them. In other words, the only time that you usually do is when you really need them. When something has gone wrong, when you've had an accident, when somebody's broken in your home, when you have a reason to call a police officer, you can rest assured that one will respond from Marquette immediately, quickly. They will be there. The same thing with the fire department. You're not waiting for volunteers to come in and fire up the truck, you've got a response going out right now. That is in stark contrast to many of the communities, many of the townships that we live around. So when you live in the city of Marquette, you're paying for something that is critical to your, to your existence really, which is that very timely police and fire department coming in at a high professional level of training and their ability to deal with your problem as quickly as humanly possible. That's, that's extraordinarily important. Tom Baldini, Tom was into so many things and he's missed so many ways, not only just from the city of Marquette perspective in terms of being the mayor of the city and some of the things he was doing in the background, but the fireworks, program manager for the economic club, obviously, the, the foundation for the, for MAPS, working with some of the kids at school and speaking programs. It was a huge amount of good that that man was doing for this city, and he continues to be certainly missed to this day. It's, it's pretty odd that a day goes by that I don't think of him. 2019 is going to be a very challenging year, as alluded by some of the commissioners, that we've got some issues, we've got to get our hands around and make decisions on and move on, and that's what we do. We make decisions and we move on. Lastly, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everybody. Enjoy the holidays and be safe. That said, City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and just one note for the public and also to remind the commission that City Hall will be closed beginning this Friday, the 21st through the 25th, open on the 26th and 27th. Don't laugh at me. Closed on the 28th through the 1st and back on the 2nd, so we've got two days during the holiday period that we're open. Staff will have time to enjoy with their family, some extended time, so that's all I have. Thank you.
This meeting stands adjourned. I like that. We'll do one thing well.